Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special joint study session of the CCMHB and CCDDB. Tonight, we are welcoming some special guests who are going to give us some perspectives on disability services, particularly in Illinois. Stephanie, would you call or roll?
Joyce Still.
Here.
David Happ.
Here.
Cheryl Hanley Maxwell.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Deb Roche.
Here.
Tom Moore.
Judy O'Connor.
Joe Omo Asagie.
Elaine Plencia.
Here.
Kyle Patterson.
Julian Rappaport.
Here.
Ann Robyn.
Here.
Margaret White.
Susan Fowler.
Here.
There's a quorum. Well, on behalf of the Mental Health Board, we're just very happy to participate in this study session to learn more about the status of the Legus decree and funding available for individuals with developmental disabilities, many of whom we do know through family or friends, and we're delighted to have Mr. McManus here to bring us up to speed. Thanks.
I would just like to second that thank you and welcome. We're thrilled to have you as we start looking at priorities for another three-year cycle. It's very helpful to have, I think, your take on if we're on the right track, what we need to do to maybe shift gears a little. It's good to know the trends, and you certainly have your finger on the trigger of what's happening at the state level in particular, so thank you for coming.
If you want to invite members of the audience to sit up here near the microphones.
Oh, yeah. If anyone wants to come up closer, you're welcome to, or not real sure where those microphones, or you mean even up?
Yeah, people can sit in these spots. If there should be a question.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so is it my meeting?
I'd just like to introduce you to everybody in the room. Mr. McManus worked for the Division of Developmental Disabilities for 17 years as a staff attorney for the Office of Inspector General, the State Coordinator of the Home-Based Program, and the facilitator of the North Suburban Network. Prior to that, Mr. McManus spent 15 years as a reporter and editor for the Chicago Tribune in Chicago and Springfield. Mr. McManus has provided consultation services to a total of 58 agencies, including staff training on how the system works and phone consultations. He also provides consultations with families. Mr. McManus has an adult daughter, Laura, who has cerebral palsy.
What was that last part?
You have a daughter, Laura?
Okay.
Who has a developmental disability?
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for the introduction. I did work for many, many years for the state, and then I became a consultant six years ago, and I recommend retirement to all of you. It's worked out for me because I wasn't just sitting on the couch, but I, all of a sudden, found myself doing this consulting work, which I hadn't planned to do. Basically, all of the agencies who I had worked with over the years, who were operating group homes and other services, wanted to continue to connect with me, so as a result, I do a lot of work with the agencies. I also, as she said, I do, I'm sorry, what is your name?
Yes.
Okay. As Deb said, I do a lot of work with families, and that's just kind of informal. Anybody can call me up, and does everybody have a copy of the handout? Okay. And my phone number and my email are on there. And then I put out a newsletter, which is great fun for me because I was a newspaper man for much of my life, and now I'm able to kind of combine the journalism with the disabilities. And my organization has become a member of the, has become one of the, what's commonly called the trade associations. There are six big groups in Illinois that represent all the providers in the state. My wife, Ellen, is sitting, oh, she just stood up. She's over there by the, she's over there by the side of the room talking to our old friend, Vicky Nisswander, who I have known for years and years. I won't embarrass you by saying how long, Vicky, but there was a reason why I, oh, I know why I was introducing Ellen in addition to just introducing Ellen, because she provides terrific assistance to me, is that I, unfortunately, I think it's inevitable that there's tension between the provider agencies and the families. Not always, you know, there's some great networks between the two, but my wife is first and foremost a parent, and then here I am, working for all of these providers, you know, and so then sometimes our dinner table conversation is not to be recommended, you know. But I got into all of this because of my daughter, as you said, Deb, and what I'm going to do tonight is go through, Lynn has heard me speak a couple of times, and so I'm going to do the same thing, Lynn, as I have done in the groups that you've heard, which is to kind of go through this handout page by page. I would invite you to ask questions or to raise your hand whenever there's something that's unclear, and I guess that you're saying that if they do that, they should be using the microphone down there. But the goal of this is to just kind of explain, because nobody understands our doggone system, to understand what the Illinois disability system is all about, and then hopefully it will inform your boards in terms of making your plans for the future as to how you want to spend the funds that you have available. I think it's wonderful that you have the Mental Health and the DD boards, and that you're able to get funding to provide for the much-needed services, because, as we know, the state of Illinois just simply does not do the job when it comes to particularly developmental disabilities. We're 47th in the country in funding of developmental disabilities, and I always say, thank God for Mississippi, or we'd probably be last. So the more we can get activity and funding at the local level to provide services for our folks with the disabilities, the better, because Lord knows they need it. Ellen and I have been fortunate that our daughter got in, our daughter's 41, and so then she got in many years ago, actually at the age of 10, and in those days, there was quite a bit of funding, so we didn't have to jump through those hoops. There was no such thing as the puns waiting list, and we were able to get funding, and so we're one of the fortunate ones, knock on wood, you know. But I know that there's an awful lot of families out there that are in great need, and there's an awful lot of families out there that don't have a clue as to how to go about it. I've tried to urge the state to do more of these kinds of trainings, but then, in the absence of them doing it, I do it. I guess if they did it, I wouldn't have a job, so I do it. So with that little introduction, can you all hear me okay? This, the handout that you have starts out by talking about Department of Human Services, which was created in the late 90s, and before that, we had a lot of different departments, smaller departments, and Governor Edgar decided that it would be a good idea to create a great big agency that would consolidate them. So we now have a division of developmental disabilities, and a division of rehab services, a division of mental health, and there's an alcohol division, and there's what they call the Family and Community Services Division. So it's an enormous department. One of the ideas was that we would all be able to talk to each other and have more, have better communication among these different fields, but I got to say, that didn't really happen. And so then, as a result, I only have a small understanding of how those other divisions operate. I wish I knew more, but I know all about DD, and that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. And then this just goes on to talk about how we are, how the Division of DD is divided up into regions. The primary services that the Division has to offer are community integrated living arrangements, otherwise known as SILAs, which is another term for group home, and home-based services for people who either live with their families or live on their own and do not require or do not desire 24-hour services. And we also have some larger facilities called intermediate care facilities, ICFDD, which I will refer to later on in the presentation, but this, that's not operated by the Division of DD, but that is an option that people need to be aware of. And then the Division of Rehab Services is another option, because they provide some of the same things that the Division of DD does, and they're actually easier to obtain. So when I worked for the state, I used to refer people to, particularly to the Division of Rehab Services if they were looking for in-home services and were having a hard time getting them from us. The key to our developmental disability services in Illinois is what we call independent service coordinator agencies. They used to be known as PASS agencies, and probably many of you have heard that term. PASS Agency stands for pre-admission screening, but the official name is independent service coordinator. We have 17 of those around the state, and those agencies don't provide services, they arrange for them, and the only way that an individual can get funding is by going to their local ISC, their local independent service coordinator. And so that's the primary role that they provide, is an intake role, and if someone called me and said, "How do I get services?", I would give them the name of their local ISC, and I'd say, "You need to go to the ISC. They're the ones that are going to sign you up and interview you and assist you," at least to the extent that they're able to in obtaining services. The other thing that the ISCs do is keep track of, oversee the delivery of services. As we'll talk about a little later, we get a great deal of money from the federal government. We get 50% for both of these big programs, the group homes and the in-home services. 50% of the funding comes from Washington, and Washington has quite a bit of expectations that we spend that money wisely, so they required Illinois to set up this network of ISCs that would keep track of, basically, of how that money is being spent and make sure that the recipients of services are getting what they bargained for. So you will not only deal with the ISC in order to get into the system, but then, once you get into it, if you get into it, the ISC has the job of keeping track on you and making sure that you are getting what you signed up for. More recently, just in this past few months, the ISCs have taken on yet another very important role, and that is drafting the personal service plan for each individual, both in Silla and a home base. That used to be done by the provider agencies, but the federal government, the good old feds, who I referred to a moment ago, you know, they think that that ought to be done by what they call a conflict-free organization, and the ISCs are conflict-free, and in other words, they're not the providers, so they don't have a personal interest in what an individual's plan should be. They are supposedly impartial. So then, after all these years of the providers designing a plan for each individual, now as of July 1st, the ISCs have that job, and Lynn asked me specifically to touch on that because it's kind of thrown the system into an uproar. The ISCs are really overwhelmed with this new task. They didn't get any more money from the state to do it, and I don't know how they're doing it, to tell you the truth, but they are, all of their workers are undertaking the job of having each individual come in and interviewing them extensively with the idea of creating what they call a person-centered plan for that person, the idea being that we, that if we're providing services to these folks, we should ask them what they need, and we should try to ascertain how we can best serve them personally, instead of just kind of having a cookie-cutter system, which I think some people feel we've had in the past, where, you know, we have a program, and you fit into that slot or this slot. It's much more of an emphasis on what exactly do you want out of life, and as a person with a disability, what can this provider do to help you get that? The only catch to that is that there's so little money to go around that I gave the example, at a recent meeting, I raised my hand, I'm always doing that to kind of be a thorn in their side, and I said, you know, "What if I wanted to go to a movie every night?", you know? That's my personal plan. I really like to go to movies. Would you, I'm living in a group home, and I'd like to go to a movie every night. How about it? You know, could you provide a staff to take me to that movie? Well, we all know that that costs money, and that Illinois has not been willing to spend a whole lot of money, and so it's idealistic to think that each person can have their perfect personal plan. So that would be Ed the skeptic that's saying that. On the other hand, it's certainly a worthy idea to say that we ought to make a real big effort, much more than we ever have, to create personal plans and to take a look at the real wants and needs of the individuals. Yes?
So the schools since 1986 have been supposedly creating transition plans for youth with disabilities. Are they working with the ISCs at all in creating these plans? Because the transition plans are supposed to all be about planning for the future, and many of them are using the person-centered planning model.
So you're saying that the schools try to put together a plan before they graduate?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And there needs to be a whole lot more communication between the schools and the ISCs, because I think that right now, in many cases, that they're isolated from one another, and so, but you're absolutely right, that it makes sense for the schools to be heavily involved in it. I don't see that happening to a great extent. I see them as two islands working separately.
Thank you.
But it's an interesting, that's a good point. The providers, you know, are very upset about this because they're saying, "Well, we've been doing this all these years. We know these people. We're with them day in and day out. The ISCs don't know them very well. We're the best ones to do it." And of course, the proponents of this idea would say, "Well, yeah, but you have a conflict. You have a conflict of interest because you want to make a plan for the individual that will be in the interests of your agency, and you want to save money and so forth." So you don't want to be taking that person to the movie all the time, and then the person saying, "Yeah, but I want to go to the movie all the time," and then the ISC is saying, "Well, yeah, but the state isn't providing the money for it." So it's, you can see that there's just lots of conflicts back and forth, and I don't know how it's all going to work out, but the reality is that it happened on July 1st, and I guess we have to just kind of get accustomed to the fact that from now on, those plans are going to be done by the ISCs, and we'll hope for the best. Yes?
Who are the ISCs in this area?
Okay, the regional, is that the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission?
They're here.
They're here?
Hi.
Oh, hi. Okay, well, I hope I didn't say anything bad about you. There's 17 of them scattered around the state and covering the entire state, so then the Regional Planning Commission would be for this geographical area. Is it for, just for Champaign County, or is it for more than one county?
Champaign Board of Labor.
Okay. And so that's just a, it's a nonprofit organization that has a contract with the state to provide these services that I've been talking about. And by the way, another big development, and Lynn had also asked me to talk about some things about the future, and so then, one of the things in the future, in the immediate future, is that as of about a year and a half from now, there's going to be a competition for those contracts that the ISCs have. So the Regional Planning Commission has gotten a contract every year from the state, and they've been able to just count on that as a routine matter, getting that funding from the state to operate. Now, all of a sudden, under Governor Rounder's administration, it has been announced that we're going to open that up for competitive bidding, which has a lot of the ISCs pretty nervous and just kind of like, you know, all these years, they've had it, and so then, I could come in and say, "Well, my, and, you know, and my company is located in Dallas, Texas," or something, and I could come in and say, "Hey, I could do these services better than the Regional Plan Commission, and I could probably, I could probably do them cheaper. Why don't you hire me?" And we don't know, we don't know how that's going to all turn out, but for those of you in the back row, I hope that you, I hope that you survive it, but there are a kind of a lot of uneasy feelings as to how this competition is going to work out. And I mean, hopefully, the people making those decisions will pick the best agency, and I hope they don't pick my company from Dallas, Texas, because that's just in it because we think we can do it cheaper or something like that, you know? Yes?
Do you have a sense of how much interest there is from other potential ISC bidders?
I can imagine for-profit companies wanting to come in. We have no idea who's going to apply, but basically, they're going to put out what they call a notice of funding opportunity to the general public, and then that's why I gave the example, that I, who live in another state or something, could say, "Oh, gee, I'd like to, I have a company that's involved with disabilities. I'd like to come into Illinois and make a lot of money." Or, you know, I'm painting a negative picture. I mean, it could be that a perfectly good organization in Dallas, Texas could come in here and do a better job than one of the Illinois agencies, but it's...
Are they still talking about that being, consolidating the regions into bigger regions?
Yeah. But they, yeah, that's another thing that they have spoken of, but they haven't given us any more details, but it's possible that the, did you say, Kim, that this is three counties now?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's possible that they could say, "Well, we're not going to do those three counties anymore. We're going to have a different geographical area," and they've also spoken of the idea of having more than one ISC in a region, so that it wouldn't just be the Regional Planning Commission here, but it would be them plus a second agency, so that families could choose. Well, I don't know whether they're going to follow through on all of that. One of the things that I've complained about is that the state tends to throw out these ideas kind of loosely, and this one was thrown out a year ago, that, "Oh, by the way, we're thinking about this, and we're thinking about that," and then we never heard any more. And so we are waiting to see whether there is going to be a change in the areas, whether there's going to be a competition within the area, but one thing we do know is that there's going to be a competition, there is going to be competitive bidding coming up. Yes, sir?
Do you identify how long the term of those contracts would be?
Right now, I think, the question is how long is the terms of the contract? Right now, I think it's an annual contract. Is that right, folks in the regional? Yeah. So right now, it's an annual, and like I said, it's always been automatic, so it's not a big deal. They apply for a new contract every year, and it's granted, and maybe they, maybe they're instructed by the state to make minor changes in the way they operate, but basically, it's just been a fairly routine system, and we don't know, we don't know, for instance, whether it's going to continue to be a one-year, or it's going to be a three-year, or whatever. So that's the ISCs, and one of the things that the ISC does is that they determine whether a person has a developmental disability or not, and that's based on a person getting a professional evaluation and so forth. So when you initially apply for services, you are also evaluated to see that you qualify, that you really do have a developmental disability according to the state statute. We're going to get into that in a moment, as to who's eligible and who's not, but that's, one of the jobs of the ISC is to make a determination that this person or that person qualifies, and if they turn you down, you would have the right to appeal that. So next, we're going to go to how to obtain services, and... And about eight or nine years ago, the state created this thing that some of you may have heard of called PUNs. And that stands for prioritization of urgency of need for services. And it's a, it's a, a list of all the people in the state who have DD, who are, who are interested in services. And it's a, it's a computerized list. So an individual that wants to get services either in-home or in a, in a group home from the state of Illinois first has to go to their local pass agency, their local ISC, their Regional Plan Commission, and register and, and, and get their, get their name on that PUNs system. And then as funds become available, the division selects names from, from, from that list. And over the last several years, we've had actually three thousand people in the last six years that have, have been picked from PUNs. And, and that is as a result of the Legus Court, Court suit, which I, I will go into in more detail later. But the Legus Court suit required that the, that the state agreed to enroll a certain number of people for a certain amount of time. And so the, so the, the settlement that they reached was that over a six-year period, three thousand new people would be enrolled. So, so if you, if you are on PUNs, then you may or may not be selected from, from that waiting list and offered services. It's a mystery as to who gets selected and who doesn't. It's, it's largely a random system. And I'll mention a little bit about that later. But it's, it, it's, that's one of the unfortunate things about our system is that nobody really knows who gets it and who doesn't. So the people who are selected from PUNs are notified by mail that they've been selected. And then they are determined by the pass agency to, to determine that they do have a developmental disability. And then they, it says here that they will, that the pass will assist the individual in identifying a provider agency. Well, there's not a whole lot of assistance that is involved. Basically, they give you a list of all, of all the provider agencies in the state of Illinois. There's like two or three hundred of them. And, and then you would have to get on the phone and contact these agencies and say, hey, I just got picked from PUNs. Would you be interested in serving my son or daughter? But, but if you can, I, once you have been picked from PUNs, if you can identify a, an agency that is willing to serve you, then, then it's automatic, and the state provides the funding to that agency to provide the services to you. So that's the way, that's the way you obtain services. Or, as I sometimes say, that's the way you don't obtain services, because there's so many people in Illinois that don't. And the only other way to do it is by means of what they call the crisis category. And that is, if I can show that, that my family is in such a crisis that we just can't make it, and that our son or daughter absolutely needs immediate services, I can apply. And if I have a provider onboard who, who says, yes, we will provide the services to this person, I can apply to the state. And one of my principal duties when I worked for the state was serving on a committee that made those kind of determinations week after week. And it was, it was the hardest part of my job because, you know, we were making these kind of life-or-death decisions that your family is really needy, but then maybe your family is even, even worse off. And so who do we pick? We don't have enough money for both of you because the state's broke. So, so let's give it to you, and, and then you're out of luck. But then, oh, wait a minute, that one was more needy, but then we've somehow, you know. So, so it's those kind of very subjective decisions that were being made by the, by that committee. And I was pretty unpopular on that committee because I always wanted to give, to give, to give it to everybody, you know. So I was sort of like the, the reliable yes vote. And there were, a lot of people on that committee were just, no, 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 you know. We are the stewards of the taxpayers' money. And we are. And we are, we, we, it's not that we would give out that money willy-nilly, but there were, I can tell you that there were people on that committee who were just extremely negative about, about, about providing it to anybody. And that's not, that, that's not the way the system ought to run, but that's what we have. So the crisis, that's what crisis is. That if you can show that you really have an urgent need, you can basically bypass the PUNs system. And if you get turned down by that committee, you have the right to appeal. And some people were able to, there's an appeals unit within the division. There's some people that were able to successfully appeal by providing more information as to, that they really were crisis. So there are some people that get, it's not easy to get crisis, but there are some people that, that get crisis. And all the rest basically just have to wait and hope, hope that that letter comes in the mail saying that they've been selected from PUNs. Now, any questions before we proceed? I hope I'm not going too fast, but yes?
So I've had acquaintances and friends selected by PUNs, and they've had a very, very difficult time finding a provider. Do they run out of time at some point?
The letter says that they have six months, but fortunately, the state doesn't. The, the question is, what, what if you, what if you're having a hard time finding a provider? The state has been pretty understanding if you can demonstrate that you're actively looking for somebody. But that's, I'm, I'm glad you asked that, because that's one of the flaws of our system, is that it's great to say, okay, we have this PUNs system, and you've been selected. So, but, but it's not as easy as you can just walk into a group home the next day, because you've gotta, you've gotta find the provider. You've gotta find a provider, number one, who has a vacancy. Number two, a provider who is willing to serve you. Number three, a, a provider that, that operates homes that, that are attractive to you. And a lot, an awful lot of us don't like the idea of having to move into an eight-person group home. It's so, so much bigger than the whole rest of the country. If you can believe it, our, our primary size in Illinois is eight persons. In the rest of the country, the average size of group homes is only three people. And so wouldn't it be wonderful if we could have all of our group homes to be only three? Kind of like a, a small family, you know? But instead, we have a huge family of eight people in a, in a home. And, and as I say, the predominant size of group homes in Illinois is, is, is eight people. So if I've been selected from PUNs, and my, and my provider that I would like to go to has an eight-person group home, I may say, well, no way, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go into an eight-person. So then, so then what do I do? I can look elsewhere. I may, I may have to, I may, the, the place that I wanna go to may be quite far away. And, you know, instead of ideally being reasonably close to home. Another big issue with the whole SILA program is that I'm gonna be very restricted in the kind of day activities I have. And I may have had a wonderful day program under Homebase, and then I get selected from, in fact, I, I tell the story of a good friend of mine who, who was, was dying for years to get selected from PUNs so that his son could move into a group home. But in the meantime, his son had some very, very good, uh, day program and was living at home. So then when he moved into the group home, he could no longer go to that, that program because he had to only go to a licensed day program. And so there, there are a lot of inequities. And getting selected from PUNs, in other words, is not, is not the end of the road. And oftentimes, it's, it's disappointing to the families because it's a wonderful thing to get that letter, and then you go out and try to find the services that you thought you were gonna get, and they're not. In many cases, they're not, they're not what you had anticipated. Going on to eligibility, there are two, two things that you need to be eligible for funding under our system. And the first is to be enrolled in the federal Medicaid program. And that's fairly easy to do if you demonstrate that you do have a, a serious disability. And if you demonstrate that you don't have a lot of money in the bank, that, that you're basically a low-income person. And, and after all, all of our folks, or most of our, most of our folks with developmental disabilities are low-income. They are not capable of holding down a full-time job and earning a living for themselves. So they are pretty much in the same category as what we call poor people. And the Medicaid program nationwide has been set up for poor people. It's been set up for low-income people who need healthcare and can't afford it because of their low income. And so our, our folks with disabilities are kind of in that same category. Mom and dad may have resources, but once a person turns eighteen, that's not counted against you. And if you are, if you are an eighteen-year-old or above, you are an adult. And if you're incapable of earning a living, then you are a low-income person. And so then that's how we have qualified, our people have qualified for the, for the nationwide Medicaid program. So you, you have to, you have to get approved by Medicaid, which, as I say, is not necessarily that hard to do. But you do have to fill out forms and be evaluated and so forth. And then you have to prove to the state, or prove rather, to your pass agency that you have a developmental disability according to what the state statute says that means. So I may think I have a developmental disability, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I, that, that I meet the official statutory qualifications. Most of our folks have what's called an intellectual disability. And by the way, tonight, I've, I've, I've referred, I've used the term developmental disabilities and DD just because it's easy to do. Increasingly, we've started using IDD, which is intellectual and developmental disability, to, to describe our population. And so then within that category, I would say approximately two, three-fourths of our people have an intellectual disability, which we used to call mental retardation. And that means that they have been evaluated by a psychologist, and they generally have an IQ of, of seventy or below. And, and the, the onset of their disability occurred prior to reaching adulthood. And then they have significant deficits in at least three life areas. And so the middle of page four of this handout lists six life areas, and you have to be able to show that you have significant deficits in three of them. Self-care, language, learning, mobility, self-direction, and capacity for independent living. So it's kind of a combination of having a low IQ and having deficits in your, in, in the way that you function in life. So that, that would be, as I say, the main way that people qualify as DD. The, the other way, which roughly twenty-five percent of the, of our folks get in, is through what we call a related condition. And that is that they have cerebral palsy, or epilepsy, or, or autism, or some other condition that results, and these are the key words, results in impairment of, of intellectual functioning or adaptive behavior that is similar to ID. And, and so if you can demonstrate that you have one of those conditions, but not necessarily a low IQ, but, but that you have, you do have the deficits in the three life areas, you can get in through, through the related condition. And as I said, that's, that's all done by the pass agency. And if the pass, if the pass agency finds you ineligible, you have the right to appeal that to the state. And some people do that, and they prevail. On the other hand, it could all, it could also happen that somebody is approved by the pass agency, but then the state disagrees with them, although that's, that's fairly rare. So that, so the, the pass agency is the key one. But they don't just do that subjectively. They do that based on, based on what you submit to them, that you have particularly, that you have been evaluated by a psychologist and, and found to have, have a, a low IQ, and that you have been evaluated with regard to those life areas. Yes?
Is the IQ score a bright line? That if you're, what if you score seventy-five?
Is, yeah, is the IQ absolute? No, and that's why I said generally, it, it, there might be a, a person with an IQ of seventy-one or seventy-two, but they, but, but their, what they call their, their adaptive behavior, which is their, like, their life, their, their functioning in life areas is low, so then they would get in. Or there might be somebody who had an IQ of sixty-eight or sixty-nine, but adaptively, they were really doing well. And so it's, it, that's all, that's all really determined by the psychologist that you go to. And the psychologist has to sign his or her name, saying, I find that this person has an intellectual disability. And so, but, but, so it's not, it's not really, it's not really absolute. Okay, now we're gonna go into what's out there. And some people said to me, how come you don't give that at the first? And the reason I didn't give it at the first is that it's so hard to get funding that it seemed to me that if I, if I told about all these great services that the state provides, but then at the end I said, oh, but by the way, it's harder than heck to get them, people would be pretty disappointed. So I try, I try to present the, the difficulties in, in obtaining services first, and then I, then I go into what services are available. So as I said earlier, the, the, the services are either residential, which means you go live in a, in a facility, in a group home, or they're in-home, which means that you are staying with your own family or, or living on your own, depending on your ability. So in Illinois, we call our, our group homes SILAs. And a twenty-four-hour SILA is staffed by, by shifts of people that work an eight-hour shift. And so the overwhelming number of our group homes are, and we have thousands of people living in, I can't remember the figure now, but it must be like ten thousand people living in group homes throughout Illinois. And the, the overwhelming number of them are, are staffed in, in shift, in shifts, in eight-hour shifts. They call it shift, a shift-staffed SILA. There is one other kind of twenty-four-hour SILA, and that's what's called host family. And those are much smaller. Those are only two people to a home. And the difference is that it's not a shift staff. It's a, there's a live-in caregiver. So there's a, somebody that actually lives with you. And, and we, and then to complicate it further, we have two kinds of host family. So one would be the, the traditional host family. If you know anything about DCFS foster care, it's where I already have a house and a family, and I invite two people with disabilities to come and live with me. And then I, I provide care to, provide care as well as housing to them, and I get paid for doing that. So that would be the traditional host family. The other one is referred to as shared living, which is where the agency goes out, agency obtains a, a, a house or an apartment, and goes out and, and finds somebody to live there, to hi, hire somebody to live there. And then that becomes their, their home, and then they care, they take care of the other two people. So in, in both cases, it's, there are only two individuals, and there's a live-in, but they're slightly different. And our, our daughter Laura lives in one of those shared livings, where, where she is served by an agency. She and her roommate live in, live in a, in a condo, a three-bedroom condo. And that third bedroom is occupied by the caregiver. And so it's the caregiver's home, too, and then the caregiver is employed. And so it's the caregiver's home too, and then the caregiver is employed by the agency to take care of Laura and her roommate. And, and we love, we love that arrangement. It's much more personal and family-like, but unfortunately, it's quite rare in Illinois. And the, the, for whatever reason, not very many providers have embraced that. And so I, I don't know whether that will change in the future. I know that in a lot of other states, that's a very common model. But somehow in Illinois, the, the, the common model is the traditional group home. So those are the two kinds of, yes?
You're right. We don't do much of that. The fact is that if we pay direct service personnel, we could probably do more of that, but we don't pay them well. And so to find someone who will come in and live, you know, I, I, we have a condo, we have a son, we have friends, we have all of this. But to actually access that, paying someone nine dollars and thirty-five cents an hour to live and take care of other people, they can't, I mean, obviously, if they had the room, that would be helpful. They could live there, and it would be great. But the fact is that we have too many people who need that service. And we have too many people that are living in situations that are not optimal for them because the state of Illinois will not pay direct service providers. So when I saw that you were coming, the question that I really wanted to ask you was, how do we put pressure on the state of Illinois to pay its bills? To actually look, I mean, this year, but, uh, direct service personnel in group homes and, and in day centers and all of those things got a seventy-five cent an hour raise. Everybody thought they were going to get seventy-five cents an hour raise. That's not how that even works. There are all kinds of little things that some people are going to get it, some people are not. I think because all of us at some point probably have taken care of a family member who is an elder person, the state seems to be much better about paying them better wages than those who are actually taking care and living with, doing those eight-hour shifts, doing whatever they do, they don't get paid the same. It's like fifteen dollars an hour, which still I think is low, but nonetheless, it's fifteen dollars an hour. So the state's willing to pay that for home health for elderly. They are not willing to pay that for people who have developmental disabilities. Any advice on how we go about forcing that issue?
You know, I wish I knew, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up, because this is something that we have been struggling with in our, I referred to the fact that my organization and five others represent all the provider agencies, and we got together and formed a coalition. And in fact, if you haven't already, you could look on, on the internet. We have a website. Our, our campaign is called "They Deserve More," because they do. They deserve more. Our workers deserve more. Our individuals with disabilities deserve to have our workers well-paid because, because they're not getting the quality that they should from somebody who's only, doesn't even have enough money to pay their own family back home, you know? So it's a crying shame, and then it's, it's made worse by the fact that we know that Illinois has been real low on funds for, for the last many years. And then for the last couple of years, it's been this terrible political fight as to, as to the budget, and, you know, it's a miracle that we finally got a budget this year, because we didn't even have that. So our, our coalition, you're right, tried to get fifteen dollars an hour because we thought, well, at least that would be a decent wage. And our people wouldn't all be going off to work at McDonald's, or Amazon, or whoever, because that's the reality. Why would I want to do all of this hard work of taking care of people and assisting them with their toileting, and their bathing, and their feeding, when I could go work for McDonald's and just flip hamburgers, you know? And so we asked for fifteen dollars. We got, you know, I don't want to be political about it, but we, we got zero help from the Republicans. And, and a lot of that was because the governor was telling them, "Don't vote for this." And then with the Democratic votes, we got the bill passed a year before last, and then the governor vetoed it, and we were unable to overcome the veto. Then we started out again this year. And then this year, we, we finally were able to get them, first they said fifty cents, and, and we were, and, and one of, one of the people in the group said, "You mean, we worked for nine hour, we waited nine years to get fifty cents an hour?" And then they raised it to seventy-five cents, and that's all that they would raise it. And then the governor still vetoed it. But then some, as we know, some of the Republicans did come over and voted for it, and the veto was overridden. So, and we're going to be back again in the spring. This is going to be an election year, so it's going to be even harder to do, because legislators don't want to vote for tax increases when they're coming up for election. I don't know how you, I, I think we've done, our coalition has done a wonderful job of trying to get newspapers to write stories about it, and this and that. They have this great website and so forth. I'd hate to be a legislator, because I hate to be a legislator in Illinois, because, you know, obviously, it's not just us who are asking for things. They've got all kinds of special interest groups right and left who are barraging them and saying, "I need money to build better highways," or "I need money to do this or that." But somehow along the way, over the years, the state of Illinois has just fallen way, way, way behind the rest of the country, so.
Wasn't the impact of the original fifteen dollar an hour about three hundred million?
Yeah. It was, the fifteen dollars an hour would have cost three hundred million dollars out of a thirty-seven billion dollar budget, you know? So it was, it was a drop in the bucket, but then, as I say, there were, there were so many other concerns, and that, that was, that was, that was the best that we could do. So I don't have any magic bullet on that. I wish I did. But you're right. And then the, by the way, as long as I'm talking about this, one of the issues of this is obviously that the quality of the care has suffered greatly. We've got, we've got agencies that are understaffed, and their people are working overtime, and they're, and it's not only costing them a lot for overtime, but those workers are, are tired and, and not doing the job they should. The agencies are not able to take people out on outings and things because they're low-staffed. And so then we've got the, the Legus case, and the lawyers in Legus went to the, to the judge and said, you know, they're, the state agreed to provide not only services to more people, but good quality services, and they're falling down. And the judge agreed, and the judge has now ordered the state to come up with a plan, and I don't know what kind of a plan it's going to be, but we're waiting now for the state to come up with a, a grand plan for how they're going to try to comply with that consent decree. So it's good that we've got those pressures on, on the state, and they, they can't ignore that federal judge, and they've got to come up with something. But I'm now holding my breath as to that it's going to be the, a miracle, you know? Yes?
I've found that most of our legislators, that there is people who actually understand the system that you're working in, and those are the people making the decisions. And I wonder if you have advice on, I know we can't put them in a class or these things, but I've found that in meeting with them and trying to explain to them, I'm, I'm shut down, first of all, because of the political hype. I understand. But they can't make informed decisions if they don't understand the system. And if the system is so complicated, or else we all would be here. So I just wonder if you have suggestions on that, or anything that within the "They Deserve More" campaign, we're looking at how we're educating our legislators on their decisions, not just looking at the money side of it, but actually looking at how the system is running.
So the, the question is, you know, what about the fact that most of our legislators just don't comprehend what the system is all about, and how can we correct that? And I, again, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I think that that's a big part of our job, is to educate our legislators. And so here in Champaign, you know who your senator and your representative are, and, you know, you ought to make, each, each family ought to make an appointment to go down and meet with your senator and your rep, and to bring your son or daughter with you, which, which is a, a great thing. I mean, the, these folks in the legislature, for the most part, have not been exposed to people with disabilities, and they don't understand what kind of day-to-day problems your, your family goes through, unless you get that across to them. But then, of course, the bottom line is, they're going to say, "Well, gee, you know, we really feel sorry for your family, but we've got all these other, other special interests who are bombarding us." And so I don't know how we go about, but certainly, that, that would be an important part of it, is that our legislators just simply don't, they don't understand how much it costs to care for people with disabilities, and they probably think nine thirty-five an hour is, is adequate or something, and it obviously isn't. I mean, this staff shortage has, has really reached a crisis throughout the state, and that's, that, that's, that's something that isn't going away. Yes?
Is there any effort to, for the workers to organize? Are there unions involved at all? Or is there a possibility of worker union?
Oh, yeah. There are, there are certain agencies that are unionized. Now, I don't know whether you're, maybe someone knows whether the, what's your big, your big agency here is developmental services? Do you know whether they have a union?
No.
Okay. There's a lot of the larger agencies, particularly in the Chicago area, do have unions. But, and, and then, you know, you know, that a union is going to make certain demands, but the agency can only provide what they can provide, and the agency, I'm sure, will, will say to the union, "Well, we'd love to give your workers more, more money, but look at what we're getting from the state." And by the way, when we talk about the nine thirty-five an hour, fortunately, a lot of our agencies do a huge amount of fundraising, and so they're actually able to give more than that. But it shouldn't be that way. They should be able to get, get what they need from, from the state. And then there are also a lot of demands put on, on parents. And I can tell you, as a parent myself, our daughter, our daughter is in a, is receiving services from an agency, and that agency is, is always kind of reminding us that they sure would like more donations from us to help, help them do their job, you know? So that money ought to be coming, a hundred percent of it ideally ought to be coming from the state, but it, but it just simply is not.
That's the, that is the foundation of the Medicaid supplementation rule. It's that families were getting squeezed for extra money for their family members who were in nursing homes. That's where it comes from.
Yeah. I believe it. So I talked about twenty-four-hour CILA, and then there, there are two types of, of CILA that are less than twenty-four hours. The first is called intermittent CILA, and that's where a person is capable of, of living on their own and does not need twenty-four hour. And they receive fifteen hours a week, or if they can show the need for more, they, they can get more, more hours than that. But typically, a person in an intermittent lives in an apartment, either by himself or with a roommate, and, and gets fifteen hours a week of services coming in to make sure the person takes his medication, to make sure his, his apartment is clean, and, and maybe helps him with his grocery shopping or whatever. Family CILA is kind of similar to that. It's where a worker comes into the home for fifteen hours or maybe more. But it's where, it's where the individual, the family has chosen to keep their son or daughter at home, and then mom and dad are providing free care to that person, but they, they sure need some help. And so then they're able to get the fifteen hours of, of a worker coming in to assist them. And so both of those are, are, are wings of the CILA program. And if you're in one of those arrangements, and then it turns out later on that you need twenty-four hour, it's pretty easy to move up to, to, to get qualified, to move up to the twenty-four-hour CILA. I'm going to talk about the home-based program in a moment, and the home-based program is rather similar in the sense that a lot of those home-based people live, live at home. The, the, the big difference is that if you're in home base and you want to move into a group home, you, you, you have to go, you have to jump through all these hoops. If you're in family CILA, you, you can pretty much automatically graduate to the twenty-four hour. So that's one of the advantages of, of people getting twenty-four, getting a family CILA. And then in all of these CILA programs, you are authorized for, automatically authorized for day services. Day services, what we mean by Davis, day services is either developmental training, or it means supported employment. So if you are a person who is, is more capable of getting a, a real job in the community with some coaching and so forth, you can get supported employment. And if you're not, not capable of that, you, you would go to a program five days a week and, and, and get developmental training. The, many of those programs are what we have called sheltered workshops. Nowadays, the sheltered workshops are, are becoming less and less common, but they're still, they're still very, very much with us. But, but they are frowned upon by the experts, and, and the federal government actually has come down on certain states and told them that they couldn't do sheltered workshops anymore. Now, whether that will ever happen in Illinois, I suppose that at some point, we need to be aware that, that, that that could happen. That the Department of Justice has actually filed lawsuits against a state that ended up requiring them to do away with their sheltered workshops. And like I say, we still, they're still legal in Illinois, but there's sort of that cloud over them, because there's a lot of people that feel that that's not an appropriate way for, for our folks to spend their days. So we'll, we'll kind of see what happens with that. Yes, sir?
So what was the basis of the Department of Justice filing lawsuits against other states?
It's compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Olmsted ruling. So they're saying that the Olmsted ruling doesn't just apply to residences, it also applies to employment settings and, and this day training. It has a new name, right?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what the new name is. Yeah.
So that all of, all of the supported activities should be delivered in as integrated a setting as possible. So it's ADA compliance?
Yeah. Thanks for jumping in there, because I think you know the answer to that better than I do. You're, you're right. It's the Americans with Disabilities Act, which guarantees certain rights to our folks. And if, if a state is failing to do that, they get in trouble with the Department of The, we also have, have seven state-operated developmental centers in Illinois. We have, we have approximately seventeen hundred people, and these are, that's a nice way of saying an institution. These are, these are seven facilities that have anywhere from two hundred to four hundred people each. And we have been downsizing them. And in fact, one of them, the, the center in Jacksonville was closed in the year 2012, but we still have seven. And Illinois stands out in the country as being one of the few that still relies pretty heavily on those state institutions. And those state institutions are really expensive. It costs nearly two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per person to provide services in an institution, and the average cost in a, in a, in a CILA is only fifty thousand. So when you think of all the people that could... So when you think of all the people that could, could, could qualify for CILA if we only had money for them, we're spending all that money on the institution. So that's yet another big controversial issue. And it has a lot of politics connected with it, too, as to whoever the governor is and so forth. But at, at this moment, we still have these seven big institutions that are eating up, I think it's like about four hundred and fifty million dollars a year that is being devoted to, just think of what we could do for, with that four hundred and fifty million if we, if we had it and could pump it into our CILLAS and our Homebase program.
What are the workers paid in those environments?
Oh, good question. The, the workers, what are the workers paid in the, in the institutions? They're paid something like eighteen dollars an hour. They have a union, and their union has been able to get nice, nice handsome pay raises.
Equity in community-based settings would be.
Yeah. So then that's an example where the union has been able to, has been successful in getting, and I don't begrudge them the money, they, you know, I'm sure they work hard and they deserve it. But why is it that the people in our group homes are getting nine dollars and the people in the institution are getting double that? So our Homebase program, it's a program that I, that I actually ran for, for five years, the statewide program. And it's, it's, it's actually something that, that Illinois should be proud of. We have a better in-home program than, than a lot of states, I would say. And if you, if you are, if you join our Homebase program, you don't actually, you don't actually get cash, but you can, you can, you can choose from an array of services that, that enables you to purchase services. The currently, the current amount, as of January first at, at least, is twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And so if you are in the Homebase, it means that you are allotted that two thousand dollars a month in services. And then you can, you can use that to purchase whatever it is you need. And the great thing about the Homebase is that it's very flexible. So you can choose to, a lot of people, for instance, will, will spend roughly two-thirds of that money to go to a full-time day program. And then the, and then the other left, leftover third, they would spend to maybe have a worker coming into the home. But if you don't want to do that, if you don't want to go to a day program, you could conceivably have a worker coming into the home with the entire money. And, and it's also flexible in the manner in which you obtain those services. You can, you can go to a regular agency and say, we would like you to send a worker into our home, and, 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 and we will use our money to pay you to do that. Or you can go to a friend or a neighbor or a relative or just about anybody, and you can hire that person to provide, or one, one or more people to provide services in your home. Or the third way, which has become more, more common in recent years, is you can actually declare yourself the worker. And so, so if mom or dad wants to say, okay, I, I am the worker for my son or daughter, you can actually get that entire two thousand dollars. And not only that, the good news is that that's tax-free. If the individual is living in your home, you don't have to pay income tax on that two thousand dollars. So I can, I can, I can have my son living in my home, and I get two thousand dollars to provide services to him because obviously I'm providing him twenty-four hours a day, room and board. And even though he's an adult and the rest of my kids have moved out, I, I have this adult with disabilities, and so it's only fair that I would be remunerated for that. And then I can turn around and spend that money as I choose to obtain services for him or even to pay the rent. But, but it's my money. So, 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 so those are the three ways that you can use the Homebase. And then the, the Homebase is also applicable to children. They don't get as much. They get fifteen hundred dollars a month with the assumption that they're going to school, so their families don't need as much as, as an adult would need. But it's a, it's a wonderful program. And, and I think that a lot of people have benefited from it. I said earlier that one of the disadvantages of it is that then in the future, if you want to move into a group home, you don't, you're, it's not that easy to do. Whereas if you, if you were to choose to get family CILA, you don't have the flexibility at all. It's assigned to a particular agency. I know this is all pretty complicated. And by the way, feel free to contact me if, you know, with questions afterwards if you are, my, my email is on here if, if things are fuzzy. But with the family CILA, that money doesn't come to you, it comes to an agency, and they provide the same, maybe the same kind of services in the home as you're getting through Homebase. But the advantage of the family CILA is that then down the road, five years from now, if you want to, if you, if you want your person to move into a group home, it's very easy to do that. With Homebase, you don't have that advantage, so, yes?
In the Homebase, is there any oversight of what happens in that home? I'm thinking about a scenario in which that money might go to an unreliable relative who goes off and leaves the, the person all the time. So what happens? Is there, is there, are there checks and balances here?
The, the ISC is supposed to provide that. And I, but I mean, that, that does, that, there is a potential that that could happen. And when I worked for the state, the question is, is, is there any misuse, possible misuse of that money? You know, the, the, is, is the, the money being paid to your brother-in-law, and then he's really not providing, providing the services? And that would be, if they caught you, that would be Medicaid fraud. So it's, so it's against the law to do that, but it's not to say that it doesn't from time to time happen or that there's the potential for that. And it's the job of the ISC worker who's supposed to be keeping track of, of making sure that that money is being properly spent. Okay, I promised to tell you a little bit about the Legus Consent Agreement. And what that was, was a, an individual by the name of Stanley Legus. And I've also told you that I was going to talk to you about the intermediate care facilities. But Stanley lived in an intermediate care facility, which was, the one that he lived in was a hundred, a hundred people in one facility up in McHenry County. And he wanted to live in a group home. And under, under the policy at that time, which was two thousand and five, the state of Illinois says, people who live in intermediate care facilities, they've already got a roof over their head, and they've already got care, they're not eligible for group homes. They're not eligible for CILLAS. So Stanley, you're out of luck. So Stanley went to court, and he was represented by Equip for Equality, which is a wonderful organization in Chicago that does this sort of thing. And they sued the state. And they said, you know, Stanley and people like him ought to have the right to, to live in CILLAS. And it's, it, the state realized that they were going to lose, lose the suit. And I give the example of, you know, if you, you and I are in a traffic accident, and I know that it was my fault, I may come to you and say, hey, you know, how about if I give you a thousand dollars to make this, this thing go away? And, and, and that's kind of what the state did. The state said, we want to settle, we want to settle this. They knew they were going to get clobbered if it, if it went to a trial. And so, so they agreed. And, and what they agreed, which I mentioned earlier, well, the first thing they agreed was that all people who live in intermediate care facilities like Stanley Legus, who want to move out, are, are going to be eligible to move out. As it turns out, there's a lot of people that live in those facilities that are perfectly content there. So it doesn't, didn't require anybody to move out. But anybody like Stanley who wanted to would be able to move out. And then in addition, the, the state agreed to enroll three thousand new people off of the waiting list over a six-year period. So this has been a wonderful development for, I can remember the day that that came down. I could, you know, I could hardly believe that it happened because in those days, we were getting almost nobody selected from PUNs. Year after year, they would announce that, well, we only had a, we only have a small amount of money, so we're going to add a hundred people or two hundred people or something. And so then all of a sudden, they started adding five hundred people a year for six years. The, as part of what they call the Consent Agreement. The Consent Agreement says that after the six years, that the state will continue to enroll people at a reasonable pace. And nobody knows what that means. That's the, that's what's sometimes done in, in court suits, you know? And so, so now the lawyers for the state and for the plaintiffs are negotiating, trying to come up with an agreement on what reasonable pace will, will, will be. And I don't know how that's going to come out. The, those lawyers are also arguing on a couple of, of things that the, that the state would like to do. The state would like to make it tougher to get crisis funding, which we talked about earlier. It's already really hard to get, but the, the state is wanting, wanting to make it tougher. And I'm hoping that the judge isn't going to go along with them on that. And then the state is also going to say that there will be no evaluation of need involved with regard to people on the PUNs list. Right now, there is, there is an evaluation, and that it will all be done just on the length of time that you are on the list. Which brings me to the, to the second part of this, this section on the Legus Consent Agreement, which says that according to the, and I'm, I'm in the middle, middle of page seven now, that according to the Legus Implementation Plan, in order to be selected for CILA funding, you either have to have a caregiver who's seventy-five years old or, or older, or you, you need to be classified as an emergency. And the definition of that is needing services immediately. Or you need to be classified as critical, definition being needing services within a year. So then what the state is proposing is that to do away with, with those, that emergency and critical, and just kind of lump everybody together under a category that would be called seeking services. And then to do it strictly on when you, when you got on the list. So if I got on the list for ten, ten years ago, and you just got on it yesterday, then I would have a great deal better chance of, of getting selected than you would. And then there's also, you know, it's complicated, but there's also some, some categories having to do with granting Homebase funding. And, and we just will have to see what the, these negotiations are going on right now between the lawyers for the state and the lawyers for the plaintiffs. Now, on the last page of this, we talk about the intermediate care facilities. And a lot of people don't, don't know about them. And a lot of people, frankly, would not necessarily be interested in an ICF because they are, for the most part, they're pretty institutional. Most of them are sixteen-bed facilities. And you remember that the maximum group home is only eight persons. But, but the ICFs are sixteen-bed. And then some of them, like Stanley Legus's place, are as much as a hundred beds. So they are, they're, they're pretty much institutional. They're not, they're not just group homes in neighborhoods. But the great thing about ICFs is that you don't have to go through all of this waiting list thing. If you can show that you have a developmental disability and that you're low income, and if you can find an ICF who's willing to serve you, you can move in tomorrow. So you don't have to, you don't have to jump through all those hoops. And some families do that because, you know, obviously, some families are desperate. They would have liked to have held out for, for a group home, but they can't hold out forever. And, and I'm not saying that, that the ICFs are, are all bad either. There's some good ones. And it's just a, it's a different kind of a facility, and it's much larger, and it's not as home-like, and it's not in a neighborhood. But, but nevertheless, it's, it's, it's a viable alternative for, for some families. And then I also mentioned earlier the Division of Rehab Services. The programs, the, they have a program that's quite similar to our Homebase. And if you, again, you don't, you don't have to, you, you don't have to, there aren't a lot of strict qualifications to get into that program. They also have a program called Vocational Rehabilitation, which is similar to what we call supported employment. And so a lot of folks who are, who are in our, in our population, who are unable to get services from the Division of DD, they can go to the Division of Rehab Services, and they can, they can get some of those things. I wanted to, there was, there was one thing that Lynn, that you asked me to cover, and then that was this, the federal rules. The federal government came down with a, a set of, of rules to really improve developmental disability services nationwide. And it was, it's, it's an excellent list of rules that would require our, our facilities to emphasize community integration a great deal more than they do. It would require them to emphasize, to, to, to give people much more opportunity for real jobs in the community to the extent that they're able. It would, it would require them to give people choice as to where they live and who they live with. And so there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of good, good ideas in this new rule. The, the new rule was supposed to, was supposed to go into effect two years from now. But last spring, the Trump administration announced that they were delaying the rule for three years. So that instead of it going into effect in 2019, it will not go into effect until 2022. And of course, we may even have a different president by that time, but who knows? And, and, and that was, a lot of people were disappointed by that because they thought that these new federal rules were really good. But personally, I thought that the unfortunate thing about the new federal rules is that I don't know how Illinois would possibly comply with them because, because we don't, you know, I don't know where we would come up with the money. Or maybe we would have to come up with the money. Maybe we would be required by the feds to do that. But the, the providers were very concerned about these new rules because as, as good as they were, they were going to be costly, and where the heck was the funding going to come from? So now those, now that, that those new rules have just been put off kind of indefinitely, and, and who knows what may happen next. But at, at any rate, we're not, we're not facing them to the extent that, that we were. I think I've come to the, to the conclusion of my formal remarks, but I would be more than happy to engage in further discussion or, or answer further questions or whatever you think I have not covered or that you, that you think that you would like to cover. I'm, I'm, I'm at your service, so, yes?
One question that I'm frequently asked, and my kids are younger, so other families that I'm in contact with are, they have younger kids. I guess we always hear like, well, the state of Illinois, you know, the chances are so bleak that you will even get funding ever. Nobody's going to get, like, the chances of you getting pulled off the PUNs list are so low. So why even get on the PUNs list? So what would your response be to that? So what would your response be to that?
Are you saying that your chances of getting funding are so low that the...
Yeah, right. Like, what's the advantage of getting on the Puns list sooner rather than later? Why, I mean, and I know you said up here that, within the categories, it depends, people are selected based on how long they've been on the list.
Yeah, and by the way, I don't think I mentioned it, but it's mentioned in here that there have been no selections for children whatsoever.
Right, right. So that's, yeah.
And the Legas case only applied to adults. I'm wishing that some bright, young attorney would file a lawsuit on behalf of all the kids in Illinois, you know, similar to Legas. But Legas Junior, we could call it. But I would encourage you and everybody else to get on the Puns list because it's easy to do. And all you do is contact your Regional Plan Commission and get that name on there. What that's going to, how that's going to work out for you is very indefinite. And I would not be necessarily optimistic. But then, what's the, there's no downside to getting on it, so.
I think, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Where's Stanley Legas living today?
Pardon me?
Where is Stanley Legas living today?
Oh, Stanley has moved into a group home. He's being served by an agency called Individual Advocacy Group, which I think also operates a couple of homes here in Champaign. And his home is in Oswego, which is kind of near Joliet. And he's living with, I believe, three other individuals. He's got a great life. And he's, I've met Stanley. He's a really, really neat young man. And, you know, it's just, and he's very proud of the fact that his name is on the lawsuit, you know. But it took Stanley to get us all that. And of course, it also took those good lawyers with Equip for Equality to bring the lawsuit. Oh, okay.
You know, we also often get the question, some people think it's obvious that having larger group homes or larger institutions or the intermediate care must be cheaper. But as you point out, the institutions are costing a quarter of a million dollars per person per year, and SILA is far less. In Champaign County, for example, it's fairly easy for us to create home stock for three or four individuals. It's actually really hard to find the right places to put eight or 10 or 12 or even six. How can we, can you suggest anything about how we can better have this conversation with the public to kind of help communicate with them that more is not necessarily more expensive? You know, how do you make things cost-effective and so forth?
You know, I don't know. I mean, I think it's awful that we spend so much on the institutions. And your point is well-taken that it's not that easy to find a house that would hold eight people. Increasingly, families are getting together and coming to agencies and saying, we will provide the housing to you. And, you know, if, for instance, if two or three families, if your grandmother dies and you've got a house, an empty house, you could go to an agency and say, you know, you can have this house or I'll rent it to you for a reasonable amount. And the agencies like that because it's so costly to them. You know, the agencies don't get anything from the state for those houses. So an agency just has to go out and spend their own money to build a house or to buy a new house. So they welcome families or families that get together and say, we will provide the housing if you will provide the services to our sons or daughters. So I don't think I really answered your question, but I tried to. Ellen, you've been awful quiet tonight. You usually, my wife usually, my wife has been very active in the disability field. In fact, if any of you have heard of the Family Support Network, she was the original founder of the Family Support Network back in like 1990 or something. And she got into this before I did. So she's been, so she usually speaks up, and sometimes she even contradicts me, you know.
We need her up. I would say you're a great job.
So Ed, here in the great land of You Can't Make Me, where we regularly thumb our nose at rules and regulations and federal judges, is there any recourse that we have other than getting our legislators to see the light and see that our loved ones are real people deserving of their consideration? Because we can't, it doesn't seem like the feds really enforce and make them provide services. Judge Coleman hasn't been able to make them do anything with the Legas decree. And I, I don't know how you feel. I don't feel like she's really going to enforce anything even when they come back with a plan after this latest go-around.
Well...
Is there any help from the feds to make the state comply with the federal rules?
Well, the federal rules are not in effect at this time. But I think you were asking, is there any way to force the state to provide better funding so that our workers don't get $9 an hour? And Judge Coleman has said that she doesn't feel that she has the right to actually tell the state to spend money. She has the right to tell the state that you've got to provide better services, and let's see what they come up with. But she has been reluctant to be really demanding on them in terms of money. And I don't, I think it's a political issue. I don't think we can hope that, and Judge Coleman's not a bad judge. She's not like, she's not hostile to us at all. But she's also just saying, I don't think it's the judiciary's privilege to tell a state that they've got to spend X number of dollars. And so then, it becomes a political issue. And it becomes, what we were talking about earlier is each of us going out and convincing our state senator and our state rep that you've got to take our situation seriously. And it's really awful. And we expect you, and, you know, we voted for you, and we expect you to come through for people with disabilities. And that's got to happen throughout the state, and that's an enormous task. So I don't know. Again, like I said, I wish I had a magic bullet, but I don't.
Do you think that the people in the Division of Developmental Disabilities do what they should to try and educate the legislature to get the money? I think back to many years ago when we were first starting the search for services for our son. And then in talking with different people down in Springfield, and once we finally had a plan and funding, and we weren't getting the services that were in the plan, and one person down at DD in Springfield actually said to me, well, just because you're entitled to it doesn't mean we have to give it to you.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So if that's the attitude at the state level for the people that administer the programs, what help do we have?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's a lot of my friends that work in the Division of DD, and they're nice people, and I've known them for years. But I don't know that there's a lot of people that have a lot of guts. They basically work for the director of the division, and he reports to the secretary of the department. The secretary, the director of the division is a guy named Greg Fenton. And Greg is a longtime friend of mine. But, you know, I could call up Greg tomorrow and say, hey, how come you did this or did that? And Greg would just kind of give me the runaround. And he's beholden to Secretary Demus, who runs the Department of Human Services. So Greg ain't going to rock the boat. And Demus ain't going to rock the boat because he, you know, he was appointed by the governor, and he has to keep the governor happy. So, you know, that's the way the political system works. And it's very discouraging to have to work on that. But that's what we have. I mean, that's really the way our system, not just in disabilities, but that's the way our system works statewide and nationwide, is that we rely upon the people that we elect to public office to represent us and to do a good job. And if we don't like what they're doing, we can kick them out of office and get somebody else. But you know that that's a lot easier said than done. So I don't have any better answer for you.
And the sad fact is that if, for example, somebody comes to your door and they're out campaigning or polling for a political candidate, and they come and they ask you, what is your, what are you interested in? And you say, I'm interested in improving Developmental Disability Services, mental health services. They'll look at their sheet and say, that's not even on my list.
Yeah.
That's the uphill part of that.
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to answer that. Although, I'm going out to dinner with you later, Vicki, and I could, maybe just between you and me, I could give you some advice. But, no, and it's not as simple as to say, well, it's all Bruce Rauner's fault, and all we need to do is get a new governor in. And, you know, we know that that's not going to solve all our problems. It's, it is, it's just, it's a very difficult situation. So you've got people, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make an optimistic note about all the people who are here. My understanding is that the history of services for people with disabilities, most of the improvements that have happened, including the ADA, came because people such as yourselves organized and worked hard to make things change. And the fact is that that work is never done. It's just something that's always necessary to keep on doing. But there ought to be at least some recognition that most all of the gains are due to the incredible hard work of the families and people who do care about these issues. And without that, nothing ever will happen. But we have a history that says, it can work, it can make things better. It'll never make them perfect, but it can keep on improving them. So I don't think we should all be just completely discouraged by it, even though we're not happy with the way it is now.
I think we ought to applaud that. You know, I'm glad you said that because, as you've noticed, I tend to be kind of a negative guy. And part of it is that I, having worked all those years with the state, I had to keep my mouth shut. And that now that I no longer have those restraints, I'm pretty free in my criticism of everything that's going on. And there's a lot of bad stuff, but it's not to say that there isn't some good stuff. It's not to say that there aren't some excellent people in the Division of DD that are trying very hard to make a difference. And, but you're right. It really depends on all of us getting, not giving up and getting together and making things happen. That's, wasn't it, was it, what did Margaret Mead say, Ellen, that...
It takes a small group of committed citizens to make change, and that is the only way.
Yeah, yeah. That's the only way it starts, is with some small group of citizens. So here we have about 40 or 50 people. Let's all get together, you know.
Too big of a group?
Yes, sir.
One last question. The federal rules that you mentioned that were pushed back to effective date 2022. And we don't kind of speculate it, so what that might be and how it could have been. Do you have any information about the rationale that led to those rules, implementation, that they were pushed back to 2023?
The rationale for why those rules were established?
No, not why they were established, but they were pushed back, you said, since 2019.
Oh.
In terms of their effective date. So I'm just kind of curious, what's the rationale for it? I mean, is it in general, yeah, it's money issue or whatever? But I'm kind of curious what...
Well, one rationale is that we got a new guy in as president who has been doing some things that some of us have had a hard time figuring out why. But on the other hand, and again, without becoming too political, the reality is that the Republican Party has generally not been in favor of a lot of governmental regulation. And the Democratic Party has been in favor of it. And so whichever side you happen to agree with, I wasn't entirely surprised that when we, that it was a Democratic administration that came up with all these rules. And then it was a new Republican administration that almost as soon as they took office, announced that they were going to hold off on these rules. And it's not necessarily because they were good or bad rules, but because their political philosophy is that we've got, you know, the federal government is too doggone big, and we've got too many rules and stuff. So I sort of felt like the decision to delay those rules was in keeping with the philosophy of the Republican Party. And I didn't entirely disagree with it because of the fact that even though the rules sounded good, they were going to be so expensive that I didn't, I was worried about, and I know that our provider agencies were dreadfully worried about how they were going to guarantee that they could follow all those rules. And they were going to be chastised if they failed to follow them. So I think it was going to be kind of a big mess. And I don't know how it's all going to work out. But I wasn't entirely disappointed that the rules were delayed. Okay, well, I think we'll call it quits. And thank you very much for listening to me.
I have a quick, shameless plug. The Champaign County Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Board is doing a community needs assessment. I have paper copies of those surveys on the back table if anybody needs to grab one of those.